Good evening and welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, March ninth, 2021 at six thirty in the evening. Since I'm here at City Hall with no one in front of me and I'm alone in the room, I will take off my mask. I can do that without dropping everything. Well, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everyone this evening. I'll let the record show that council members are all here and happy and liking it when the sun's out later in the evening. Before we get too far, I want to make sure that we recognize our city recorder, who just had a birthday. She's twenty-one and a few months. And so a happy birthday to Karen Johnson. Council members, you have minutes of the meeting on the twenty-third of February in front of you, and do they meet with your approval?
I move to approve the minutes is delivered.
I second that.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, hearing no opposition, most carries. We're going to go to an invited presentation from Marion County, who's going to talk about the Independence Bridge over to the Willamette. And there they're getting added in. Lanny, I can see you. You're on mute.
Okay, sorry, I something cut out for a moment. I apologize.
You're okay.
Hello, I'm Lonnie Radke. I am the Marion County County Engineer. And we wanted to take a few moments today to talk about some restrictions that will be posted on the Willamette River Bridge, the Independence Bridge, just east of Independence. ODOT has a process where they go through to analyze bridges throughout the state, and they are able to tell the counties, tell the cities and counties, what the limits are for each of the bridges based on the analysis they conduct. And at which point, when they send us the letter with the recommended postings, or the required postings, I should say, we have thirty days to install the postings and make sure that we have, or we're reaching out to the neighboring agencies, businesses, the users of the bridge. So in this case, for the Willamette River Bridge at Independence, we received the letter a couple of weeks ago on February, give me a moment, I think it was twenty-third. And we will soon be posting signs. I don't know, can I share my screen?
Thank you, Karen. Go ahead, please.
Give me a moment. Let me know when you see that.
We can now see it.
Excellent. So this is the posting that we will be installing on both sides of the bridge, which you can see is roughly, it's twenty-five tons for a lot of trucks. And this is a draft sign plan so that we can, we can show that we will be installing advanced signage as well. We're fortunate on the east side of the river that we have a jug handle style intersection. So it allows, it gives a location for trucks to turn around if need be. And you can see there are advanced signs coming from both the west side of the bridge in the city of Independence and Polk County, and then on the east side of the bridge for, in Marion County. So we wanted to provide, we reached out to the city of Independence and Polk County and Polk Fire District. I believe it was the day after we received the letter and just really started our outreach, applying our outreach plan. Wanted to make sure, obviously, that you were aware of the restrictions. Also wanted to work with you on installing the signs because our operations team, our sign shop can install the signs, but obviously, we wanted to work with you before we would do that in your city limits. And it's prompted some further conversation, and we know that we need additional analysis that will be conducted by ODOT for the fire vehicles. And one of our engineers has been working with, and I don't want to mispronounce his name, is it Steve, Chief, is it Stongi?
Stan.
Thank you, sorry. So he's been working with him to get weights and axle, axle information, sending that to ODOT, and we're hopeful that we will have more information from ODOT in another week or so. And the hope is, Brian Nicholas is our Public Works Director, and he's done a lot of this work in the past. He has been involved in other projects where we can get special, through this vehicle-specific analysis that ODOT will conduct, we can get special clearance for fire vehicles. That is the hope, that they would still be able to use the bridge because, obviously, we understand the importance and the need for that. So we're working through that right now, and we're hopeful that that will be successful. And just wanted to make sure we were communicating to everybody so that you were aware of these restrictions that are to come by the end of this month.
Brian, did you want to add a little bit? Are you there?
Sorry about that. It took, took a moment to get unmuted. Well, I'm just here to answer a question that you have. Lonnie has pretty much covered the basic information, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, questions that people might have.
Do you want to give a why there, why there was a change? Talk about the federal change?
Sure, so, yep. So really, the reason why the bridge is being posted has more to do with changes in the way that bridges are analyzed and the types of loading and the types of, you know, potential fail, failure mode that a bridge can fail under. It has more to do with that, change in the, in the design code, than it does in any loss of strength that the bridge has had. So, I mean, this bridge has been up since nineteen fifty. It's carried weight for more than sixty years. And so it's not going to be surprised by the heavy loads that it sees. It's carried that weight before. So I think this is really one of those situations where the bridge really is not in danger of failure. It's not in a significant danger of failure. But this is the law, and it is the methodology that's used to manage bridges. So we're complying with, with the load posting right now. It would be pretty expensive to upgrade the bridge to, to carry, you know, to remove this posting, but we will be in the future submitting project applications, funding applications to ODOT to do some of that strengthening in the future. But it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to take quite a while to get those kind of grant dollars, you know, get, secure those kind of grant dollars, and then put projects together that will address the strength deficiencies on the bridge. So folks should expect that this load posting is probably going to be there for, you know, I would, I would guess maybe about the next ten years or so. That's, that's not uncommon for this kind of situation.
If I can interject, I had the pleasure of listening to a presentation by the Marion County folks earlier in the week, along with some other city local officials. Let me just cover a couple of things that are brief. The bridge is owned by Marion County, was built in nineteen fifty. The situation, as was just pointed out, there's been good maintenance. There's no, no, the bridge is doing just fine. It's just that the, the loads are heavier now, seventy years later, and also that the rules have changed on the, the loads, on the, on how bridges like this are being evaluated. So there, we're just being informed. Does that be a fair characterization, Brian?
Yes, it is. And Lonnie was very correct in when she said that, you know, once ODOT, as the load rating authority for the state notifies the county, we're, by law, we need to post these limitations within the next thirty days. But we are working with the fire department to help. You know, there's some special considerations that go into analysis for emergency loads and that sort of thing. So we're working through that process to get a special rating for all of the fire department vehicles, and we're hoping that those can operate without any restrictions. So analysis, analysis will need to be performed, but that's, that's the goal when we go into that kind of a process.
Are there questions from council to the folk presenters from Marion County? Please.
What was the previous weight limit? I'm just trying to see what the reduction was.
Well, the, the bridge was operating without any limit whatsoever. So the legal load, legal loads in Oregon for your typical tractor trailer that you see on the freeway, eighteen wheeler, those operate at eighty thousand pounds, so forty tons. So that's probably the best comparable. We're taking the allowable load from forty tons to twenty, well, to twenty-seven tons for a tractor trailer.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one. Will this affect agriculture? How they get their machinery across the bridge? I don't know how much those things weigh.
Right. You know, it's most likely going to affect tanker trucks. So that tanker trucks may not be able to operate at fully weighted loads. And they may be finding that they're using some of the other county roads. Instead of going over the bridge to Independence, they may be, they may be going up one of our other county roads if they can get underneath the train trestles on the Marion County side of the river. So far, we haven't heard any of the farmers that are in that pocket, you know, between the Independence Bridge and the two low clearance railroad bridges. And if they're outside those low clearance railroad bridges, usually that's what's limiting traffic, are the railroad bridges themselves. So, so far, like Blue Heron, they haven't expressed any concern to us that they won't be able to operate because of these loads. But if, if there are restrictions, usually they have to do with tanker trucks. Those are the heaviest vehicles.
Mayor?
Please, go ahead, Counselor Corr. I, I don't have my, I can't see everybody at the moment, so go ahead, Counselor Corr.
I saw Mr. Pesamir mention at our last meeting the possibility of an issue with Brant's garbage haulers. Is that another organization, another group that needs to be reached out to?
Yeah, I think at the last, yeah, sorry, I'll just jump in here. So at the last meeting, I mentioned that as something that we were looking into because a garbage truck typically weighs around twenty-seven tons. We've talked to Brant's, and they don't serve that side of the river, so they don't really see a significant issue getting over there. It would be other haulers that might have a similar situation, which I'm, I think they actually are served from the other side anyway. But, but certainly, you know, that would be something that we'll want to make sure that, that they know, especially if they're coming over the bridge to go to Coffin Beet or something, because those trucks are fairly heavy. So, but as far as Brant's goes, they didn't have any concerns. I talked to Josh about that personally, so.
Additional questions?
Certainly, if, this is Lonnie again with Marion County. If there's anybody else that we can contact, please, please pass that information along. We, we want to reach out to as many as we can and don't want to leave anybody out. And obviously, you folks know some of those better than we do, with, especially with folks on, on the, on the west side of the, on the river. So please don't hesitate to send me that information.
And you folks have connected, and you folks already determined that school buses are going to be fine? Is that correct?
We've been told that, that school buses will not fall into this, into this. Yeah, they, they won't be exceeding the restrictions.
Great, thank you. Additional questions?
I would also add one more thing. Brian mentioned the, the process it could take in order to replace the bridge. And I think that if we work with people to communicate that, that the needs to follow these restrictions really do come down to taking care of the bridge as long as we possibly can. I think we all have, all, all of us have infrastructure that is, you know, we, we need to limp it along as long as possible because it's obviously expensive to replace. And just making sure we're communicating it in that way so that people understand it's not just a rule without anything behind it. It really is, it's, it will be in place to try to save the bridge as long as we possibly can. And I think everybody in this area understands the importance of this bridge to the area. So we want to take care of it as best as we can.
And so I just want to emphasize, because you folks really emphasized in our previous meeting, there's no, no concerns for daily traffic, for people driving over, for any of that kind of stuff, that the bridge is just fine, and it's just not going to allow big, heavy trucks to go over.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I just wanted to ask one clarifying question. So this is Marion County Bridge, but we would be responsible in ten years to replace it? Or Marion County is responsible for that? Okay.
No, this, this bridge will, won't get replaced in ten years. This bridge was designed with a hundred-year-plus, yeah, expectation of life. We do, you know, the history of the bridge is about every twenty years, the county has come in, come in and done an improvement project on the bridge. This one, we'd work with ODOT to get, get some grant funding before that twenty-year cycle to do some strengthening measures that would hopefully lift, either lift the load restrictions completely or, or reduce the restrictions so that heavier loads could cross. But we haven't done the analysis on that to see exactly what would need to be done to, to totally eliminate the, the, the weight restrictions. But that's a common question people have, hey, what's it going to take? And how long is it going to take to remove these? So we're, we're warning people. This typically is about a ten-year process on a, on a bridge this large. So we want to make sure people understand, have a good idea of what to expect in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Hope there are no more questions. I want to thank the folks from Marion County for taking the time to put this out. And I know you folks are going to be putting out some press releases so that the, the local media has written an accurate information to, to share with others. So thank you, Brian and Lanny, for being with us this evening.
Thank you. We actually did have a press release go out recently. And so if you haven't seen it, then we need to get it into some other locations. We've posted it ourselves, and, and I can send it to you.
I'm sure we'll see it in the weekly paper tomorrow.
Okay. I hope so, I hope so. And I guess while we're here, if anyone has any other questions, it's actually kind of a busy area for us in our, in our traffic engineering section with the low clearance bridges and, and the work that we're doing to notify. So if anyone had any questions, I know it's not on the agenda, but I'm, I'm here to answer if, if anyone would like an update on anything. I realize it's outside of your area, but.
Okay, I'll ask another question.
Yeah.
So are, are the big trucks still getting stuck under the bridges?
Yes, well, and oftentimes, we say stuck. They're not necessarily getting physically stuck under the bridges, but they're getting stuck turning around.
Yeah.
Yes, so we, we have a, and that's why I just thought I'd take thirty seconds here to let you know that we have an extensive signing plan that will really improve the, the guidance and notification, advanced notification to drivers before they get to the, to the bridges. Because a lot of the notification right now is at a point where it's too late for them to do much about it. And even the ones that are out further, they're just not really being seen. So we have a big, a big sign plan that will be addressing trucks coming from Skyline Riverside Road, and then obviously, southbound on, on River Road. And, and we have a couple of turnaround locations we will be using. And we're really optimistic that, that this is, this is going to be effective without, without being too high of a cost. We have some other higher-cost solutions, but it's, it's tough for us to do right now. So we're starting with, with the, the signing plan.
Great.
Great.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Marion County. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks for giving us the opportunity. Let us know if you have any questions and.
Great.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, do you have anybody out there for public comment? No, there's nobody, okay, moving forward, we're going to go into reports, give you some updates on some things. Just to remind you that tomorrow evening is Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments Annual Awards and Annual Meeting. It's taking place online. It's forty-two member governments report Marion and Yamhill. I'm on the planning committee for that event. And there's a lot of intergovernmental cooperation and contracting of services that is beneficial to, especially to smaller cities. Also met with Polk County recently as we strategize on how to move forward on trying to secure funding for the Highway twenty-two fifty-one interchange. Joined the county meetings that we had with Senator Mercury's DC staff on transportation, looking at, trying to find federal funding for that, for that twenty-two and fifty-one project. And then I was also a part of a group, along with a number of other community leaders, with Pacific Source doing a video encouraging people to get vaccinated. And so we did that just last week, and I know that those are going to be starting to, to run to make sure that people do get the vaccinations when it's their turn. And in the meantime, continuing to encourage people to please wear their mask because the, until everybody's vaccinated and the mutations have mutated and we don't have to deal with them, there is still risk. So that's what I have for updates, Mr. Pesamir. I think it's to you now.
So thank you, Mayor. I just have a few items to cover. And sorry for turning very yellow here. It looks like my computer's John Dis tonight or something. So I have to leave and come back in order to fix it. So hopefully it isn't too bothersome. So just wanted to give you a heads up that you're going to be getting a letter here probably tomorrow. Karen's going to send it out. It was addressed to council. So I just wanted to make sure you had a preview before it got to you and you had a bunch of questions. It comes from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, and it has to do with the new rules regarding mercury and the total maximum daily load. So this is, as you know, they set standards, either DEQ or the EPA does, the EPA in this particular case did that. And there is a limit that you can release, not only from your treatment plant, but also from other sources. And that's why it's talking about total max, total maximum daily load because you need to do, take measures inside your city to make sure that mercury isn't being released in the Willamette River. So we have actually eighteen months to put the plan together, so don't panic. We have had really historically very low numbers coming out of our plant, but we'll need to compare that with what exactly the EPA is going to allow us to do. And so just wanted to let you know that letter's coming. Don't worry about it. We're on top of it, and we have plenty of time to figure it out and come up with a, a plan that's going to meet with the EQ's approval to move forward. So I just wanted to let you know, since that letter was addressed to council, you'll get it because we always send anything addressed to you, to you. But that, that's really what it says. Talked about this before, but just wanted to remind everyone that we have opened a city hall in the police department. It's open Monday through Friday from eight to three. And we have a lunch period from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty. That's actually working out really well, not only for staff, but for people who want to come in on the second half of their lunch break. So I've been happy with that. And we're also open from, on Wednesday from eight to five. And on some Wednesdays, Wednesdays, we're actually opening even later than that because we have court. So we're, we're letting people come in during that time. We also have the same lunch period on Wednesday, but definitely allowing more access to people. And that's been great. There's been a lot of, a lot of activity, which we, we enjoy, being able to provide personal service. So that has been good for everyone. We are continuing to work on limited in-person library services. As I mentioned last time, we've kind of paired up with Monmouth to make sure that we're kind of doing the same things. I don't have a date yet when we're, that's going to open, but it's coming up here before long. So we're excited to get the, the library back open on a limited basis. I'm trying to figure out how we can get the computer used and systems up and running and make that safe. But definitely moving in that direction, and you should hear something, something shortly from us so that you can know when that's happening. And obviously, we'll, we'll issue information through our, our channels when we do. So really, I didn't have a whole lot, just a few things that I wanted to mention. And, but I'm glad to answer the question.
Counselor Job.
I had a question, just because you, we're talking about the library. So I've actually had a couple of reports from people. One, that there could possibly be some homeless people and they're living in their cars behind the library. And then I did talk to somebody who said that they're pretty sure they witnessed a drug deal going down at the library. So I have noticed a lot more of that activity in Independence. I don't know if anyone else has. There were reports of some makeshift shelters behind. I walked through the alleyway today, kind of by Jubilee, like behind that area. I didn't see anything. It looked cleaned up, so, but I don't know if anybody else was experiencing that. There were also, I think there was something about the sports complex.
Okay, well, yeah, thanks for that information. I certainly will pass that on to our chief. And, you know, obviously, they're, they're usually very aware of that stuff, but if there's something that we missed, you know, we're glad to hear that. So he's probably listening in right now, but if not, I'll make sure that he has that, gets that information.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Pesamir? Okay, we're going to keep moving. Thank you. Let's go on to new business. I think we have a couple of thing, several things here from city recorder Johnson. So to you, Ms. Karen.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you can see from your packet, there is two council bills before you. They're both very similar. What had happened, it was some street vacations were passed by council. And when they went to be recorded, one was successfully recorded, and the other one was not due to, and both due to minor errors in the legal description. And after consultation with the city attorney, we can't just fix it. And the only way to fix it is to repeal the previous ordinance that made the vacation and then adopt the new one with the corrected legal description. So Council Bill two thousand twenty-one oh four, it repeals and replaces a portion of Thorpe Street Vacation. And then two thousand and twenty-one dash oh five is vacating a portion of Albert Street. One of the things that we will be doing is I spoke with a person over at the county, and they are willing to help us out by reviewing the legal descriptions prior to recording. So that way, we will know if they are correct or not before I even bring them to council. So we shouldn't have this kind of thing in, in the future. One other item on two thousand twenty-one dash oh five, I unfortunately made an error in the, in the council bill itself. I said that the, under the third recital, whereas a petition was received from the Prats, it should have been received from Jack and Sherry Woodell. And so that one correction would need to be made. And I have, am, have any questions and have answers for any questions?
Does anybody have any questions on these housekeeping matters?
I do. Can we pass these together with the note about the scripters error? Do they have to be done separately?
Unfortunately, they do have to be separately because there's separate legislation.
Okay.
Everybody okay? Go ahead, Counselor Roden.
This doesn't affect anything about the, it doesn't hurt or harm the people living in these places?
No, no.
No.
In fact, it helps them because it, how one of them was found was when, even though it had been recorded at the county, they went to record a deed later on, several years later, and when, and the deed had the same legal description, and it was found to be an error then. And so this way, it's correcting it.
Getting the paperwork right. Okay, without, this is, let's start with two thousand twenty-one oh four. If someone. If someone, we will go through the, since this is an ordinance, we need to do the the multiple motions. So if somebody would start that, that would be great.
Certainly. I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill two zero two one dash zero four in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Of the motion.
Second.
Second by Takeus. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, here are no objections. Motion passes.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Thorpe Street, repealing ordinance number one five five seven and stating ineffective date.
Second motion, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill twenty twenty-one dash four for the second time by title only.
Motion. Second by Counselor Martin Willis. Is that, I didn't hear you, but I saw your mouth move and I see you shaking your head. Yes. Okay, that's a second discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no objection, motion carries.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Thorpe Street, repealing ordinance number one five five seven and stating ineffective date.
Please.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance council bill twenty twenty-one dash zero four.
Have a motion.
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Takeus. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, I don't hear any opposition, all motion carries. Thank you. Let's move to the sec.
The bill has passed and will be assigned ordinance number one five eight eight.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next one. We have to do the same drill here and give me my appropriate paper here. If someone would begin, please.
I will take this on to include the correction. I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill two zero two one dash zero five in full as the text is contained in the council packet with the correction of the Scrivener's error for the first time.
Of the motion. Second by Counselor Job. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, here are no opposition, motion carries.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Albert Street, repealing ordinance number one five seven five and stating ineffective date.
Next.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill number two zero two one dash zero five for the second time by title only.
Motion.
I second it.
Second was Counselor Job. All discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Albert Street, repealing ordinance number one five seven five and stating ineffective date.
Counselor Roden, would you like to knew the next one? You're having you're having more fun on your end than we are.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance council bill twenty twenty-one dash zero five.
I have a motion. A motion, and that was a second by Counselor Morton. All discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no opposition, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Bill has passed and will be assigned ordinance number one five eight nine.
Thank you. Appreciate council doing that. These are just the things that getting the paperwork right makes a difference because I will tell you that in my tenure, we've had the opportunity to go back decades and decades and trying to figure out things from the before time. Counselor City Recorder also has a OLCC renewal that needs to be addressed. Count, Ms. Johnson, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, when we did the annual renewals for the liquor licenses in town, Silk Thai Cuisine was not included on the list that we received from the OLCC. I'm assuming it's just because the business itself was so new because we only approved it at the end of November. So they do need to have their license approved by March eleventh, so that's why we asked to have this put on the agenda for tonight. I did contact Sergeant Headland at the Police Department, and he reviewed the the location and found no issues to prevent the recommendation of approval.
Are there any questions for staff on this matter? If not, I could use a motion, please.
Yes, I may. I move to recommend approval for null of Silk Thai Cuisine's liquor license.
I second that.
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Job. Is there discussion? No discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Here are any objection, motion carries.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you. Council announcements, any announcements?
But I'll defer to Counsel Roden.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm continuing to work on the study and evaluation of the sports complex to try to determine the need and success of having some ball fields put in downtown. And I think it's going well, and I hope to have more updates in the future. I hope to talk to Parks and Rec about it and get some real community involvement in the proposal for the downtown area. I think it would be really great to, like what the mayor was talking about, revitalize in downtown after hopefully the COVID restrictions are eased and hopefully eventually gone away with. And I think it will bring a lot of business downtown into our community and hopefully people staying at the hotel.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morton.
First of all, I wanted to thank Counselor Roden for doing all that work because this is the the use of the ball fields is a culmination of something that was on our twenty twenty vision, and it's nice to see it coming to full fruition. The only announcement I have is that the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce will be doing the annual community awards banquet virtually. That will be on August, or excuse me, April twenty-third. It will be the fifty-sixth annual. It begins at six thirty P.M. Prior to that, beginning on the eighteenth of April, is an online auction. And I have been reviewing some of the things that are up for auction, and they look pretty nice. So I encourage you all to bid for things in the auction. Donate if you have funds or items that you want to donate and participate in the online awards ceremony.
Great, additional announcements? Okay, what we're going to do here is we're going to adjourn this meeting. We'll go into.
Kathy wants to say something.
Mr. Mayor, one quick thing. And so I guess, yes, for Mr. Pesamir to relate to Public Works, thank you for the additional your dogs must be leashed signs. I've noticed them at Inspiration Gardens in a couple of places in both directions. I would suggest that maybe one be added to the trail that runs behind the hotel. There is a gentleman that walks his dog unleashed pretty much on a daily basis, and I noticed that those signs that are specific to the leash regulation are nowhere to be found on, at least not prominently on that trail. So if we could maybe relay that to Public Works, that would be wonderful.
Glad to.
Great, thank you. Okay, what we're going to do is without objection, I'm going to adjourn the regular city council meeting, and then I'll call to order the work session. So unless there's objection, we are adjourning the city council meeting, and now we're opening a work session. For those that are watching, a work session is a time for council to just talk things over. No definitive action is taken at something like that. We're not taking a public input or comment. It's just a time to talk about things, float ideas, get opinions, and things like that. This evening, Counselor Core wanted to talk about some some climate issues, and she put a resolution that is in the counselor's packet as a discussion starter. And so with that as a preliminary, I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Core, and then I'm going to guess we're going to have a broad spectrum discussion. Sound okay? Counselor Core.
So Mayor, before we, just a quick clarification, was this in the packet or was this something that I forwarded on to each of you?
It was in the packet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Core.
I believe it was in the package. It was forwarded by Mr. Pesamir.
And also in the packet. Yeah, I got it, my packet.
After talking to Tom about this, there are two members of the Climate Task Force who are in the waiting room. Should council like to have them participate in this discussion? My role in this task force has been primarily as a facilitator. The two people in the waiting room, one represents Monmouth, one represents Independence, are much more versed in some of the detailed climate stuff if people have questions to that level of detail. It's up to it's up to council whether or not we include them in this discussion.
Does anybody have a problem with allowing these folks to speak to us?
Not at all. I'd like to hear from them.
Please, go ahead, Jason.
We see Michael Cairns is representative from Independence, and Stephen Howard is representative from Monmouth. Both of you feel free to jump in whenever you think it's necessary. I'm just going to give you a quick overview. This task force has been media since October two thousand nineteen with representatives from both cities. It's kind of grassroots effort. People want to see something done. The intent of the of the climate crisis resolution is essentially to have the cities acknowledge that climate change is indeed a problem and that we want to do something about it. And one way to go about doing that is to establish a joint committee, including Monmouth and Independence, to work issues with the city staffs and try to move our cities forward. Anybody have any questions based on the resolution?
I did.
Go ahead.
Um, so I have several questions. I wasn't sure exactly what the climate crisis resolution, I didn't know what the procedure was. And so I wasn't sure what we were doing tonight. So there's a couple of questions I had where it says, whereas global warming, one point five degrees Celsius above industrial levels will negatively affect human health. In that section, I was, even if all the predictions are possibly true, the decisions that we're making, because I'm kind of wondering where the task force comes in, does it recommend to city council what we're doing and how that would affect people? I just want to make sure like cost, you know, financial cost, livability, those things are taken into consideration. And I just, I guess I don't know what the process is going to be if we have this group coming before city council. I didn't know. Have we ever done this before?
Not to my.
No, okay.
Been done in several other cities around Oregon. These are bodies that help advise the city staffs on policy.
Okay.
Yes, you can come to city council as well, but yes, it's meant to advise the city staff and work with the city staff to effect positive change.
Okay, so is there going to be like input from people in Independence from the community or, you know, do they just say, hey, I think we should do this, and then we vote on it and do it or?
Just like any other city committee or commission, these will be made up of residents from both cities, so people can certainly volunteer to be a part of this community. With any committee or commission, the city managers, there's a public meeting, so the public can certainly be a part of those meetings and provide input.
Okay, I just, I'm kind of feeling this is a little elitist and hypocritical for people who have very comfortable homes, cars, jobs. And there may be some people, especially the younger generations, disadvantaged people that maybe will not be getting the same opportunities to provide for their families that we all have. Just, I'm just thinking of the cost associated with some of these things. Let's see. The other thing was reduce municipal net greenhouse gas emissions as quickly as possible. The need for immediate targets, creating a target that's, I think it was fifty years out. Some of us might not even be around at that point. I just think maybe more incremental goals than just saying that, you know, within the next fifty years, we're not going to have any more carbon emissions. We're going to go to the pre-industrial levels. I just feel like it's kind of an arbitrary date picked by politicians as opposed to realistic expectations and technology and kind of where we're at. I look at the electric car charging stations, and I never see cars there. So I'm wondering how many people are already moving to that in our community? Let's see. My other question, rapidly phasing out fossil fuels and the technologies which rely upon them. I did have a question. How many vehicles does the city of Independence have that run on fossil fuels, police maintenance? Were the police chief and public works supervisors consulted? Will they be consulted for the cost of any of that? And how, basically, how do we plan to rapidly phase out fossil fuels? And my last question, sorry, there's just a lot. It says in here to create high-quality, good-paying jobs with comprehensive benefits for those who will be impacted by this transition, which says to me, some people will not have their jobs anymore. So I'm curious, which industries, companies are we expected or wanting to target to lower the carbon emissions? Who's going to pay to change out natural gas in homes? I just feel like we should stay in our lane and really focus on what's on our plate right now because this this is huge to me. And I do think that Oregon does pretty well with the carbon emissions. I think we are one of the lowest in the entire country. So that's kind of my questions and comments on that.
Michael, Stephen.
I can address some of those points. This resolution, I think, as Counselor Core said, has been adopted in dozens, if not hundreds, of other cities around the world. And it, what it does is recognizes the seriousness of the climate crisis and it's a fact that's accepted by all the scientists of the world. As far as the the target date that was mentioned, I think it mentions, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it mentions the year twenty fifty. And that's the that's the date that the state of Oregon policy recognizes that emissions will be reduced down to zero by twenty fifty. So it wouldn't put the city of Independence out ahead of the state. As far as cost goes, most of these measures would be would save money rather than cost money. So. Oh, and jobs, most of these things would create more jobs than they ever harm. So that's all I'll say.
Okay. I'll take a moment.
Oh, I was just going to ask about that. So to transition, it's actually going to save us money to transition to this? Is that what you were saying, Michael?
Yes.
Okay.
Stephen, I think you were trying to get in here.
Yeah, sure. So just a little bit of background, I've been volunteering on Monmouth Planning Commission for ten years, so I'm fairly knowledgeable about the limits of small government and what we can and cannot tackle. In my conversations with Monmouth and in our conversations within the task force, we've been really emphasizing, there's a lot we can do as a small community that will improve the prosperity of our neighborhoods and won't be a burden. And then there are also obviously things that are going to be off the table because they need to be tackled at the state or national or international level. So part of the process of having a intercity board is to identify the things that are the right size solutions for our community and understand what's out of reach, either out of reach now and will become in reach in ten years, or things that are just something we cannot address at our scale. So I think there's a certain amount of realism that will go into this process, and certainly the councils in both cities will be guiding and governing as they always have. will be guiding and governing as they always have. It'll be our job to find and recommend things that fit the character and the scale of our community. So anything that is out of reach is out of reach. And so I just want to, want people here to understand that the conversations we're having internally are based on what's good for our community and not just adopting whole cloth, things that we're seeing in larger cities or countries do.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are the two cities planning on forming a joint commission that will elevate to the level the same as our Planning Commission and our Independence Day Commission and so on? So that there is a governmental body that will address this across all the borders?
That's up to you all. I would hope so.
Generally, that is the idea, Marilyn, but it's up to the city to give us some direction on how that has to happen. This is unprecedented as far as I know.
Understood.
My question is because we are talking about essentially our governmental cooperation here. Has the city of Monmouth already passed this identical resolution?
No.
Session plan, when's the work session planned, Stephen?
Next Tuesday.
When is our next joint council gathering planned for or being thought about?
Hasn't been scheduled at this point.
This would be an excellent thing to include in a joint council meeting. Because simultaneous decision would be effective.
Counselor Roden, I think you were waving your hand.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things to say. And first, I'd like to thank Councilor Cor for bringing this to the council. I think it's important thing to discuss. And I've worked with Michael Cairns for years and years and years. So he and I go way back and I think I know where he stands on things. And I think he knows where I stand. I have just a little background for everybody else on the council. I've worked really hard on the historic missions to preserve independence in our trees and, you know, anything we can do to save energy and make our communities better is something I want to encourage. I'm listening to Councilor Joe and I hear what she's saying. And I hear that there's some ambiguity to this. And and we learned on the Historic Commission that the road to good intentions sometimes gets a little confusing. And so where we have policy members that may come forward and want to do what's best for our community, sometimes you know, one person's opinion isn't necessarily another person's opinion and what's best for the community. And I just want to make sure that we avoid adopting pseudo-moralistic stances on climate changes just so that we look good to others. If we're going to be serious about climate change, we need to follow the science and we need to provide sustainability and both equity and development in our policies. We need to promote financial or fiscal livability, like Councilor Joe was saying, and fiscal transparency for our community. We saw that in the recent survey, our community doesn't trust us with fiscal issues. It was one of the lowest things that we came apart. So we need to make sure that we are transparent with people in our community. So I would like to, and I don't, being a new member of this council, teach me how to do this. But I would like to add two amendments to this resolution so that we can make it more transparent and make it make it so that we're not doing stuff over community and that we're actually following the science and that we're being good stewards to not only our environment, but to the citizens and residents of this community. So can I add a amendment here or is that how I do it?
No, at this point, where this is just a discussion item and we're not, we won't be doing amendments, but share your concept. You know, share your concept and we're not going to get into wordsmithing and this is, this is just a discussion tonight.
Well, and that's what I'm curious about too, because we have the Climate Crisis Resolution we're discussing in front of us. And I think this would be the absolute perfect time to add language that would bring more clarity to it. So if we look at the Climate Crisis Resolution and after where it says, for the third time, be it further resolved, and it states commitments the city will like to take, I think we should add the following statements. Be it further resolved, the city of Independence, in order to make scientifically informed decisions about how to best serve our residents and meet the included climate goals, commit to a comprehensive study of the current net greenhouse gas emission levels in the city, which would include a quantitative analysis of current carbon sources and things. This way, we're really following the science. We're not being ambiguous or putting in personal opinions on what we feel is a huge carbon indicator. But we're actually following the science. We're learning what is producing these things and how we can efficiently solve them. The other thing I would like to add to this, after the statements with community participation, I think this resolution should add, be it further resolved, that following good governmental practices, the city of Independence commits to a two-week public comment period and cost estimate for each affected resident prior to empty entity tasked by the city of Independence commits the included climate goal, acting upon the proposed policy. That means that whenever we decide that we're going to get rid of so many fossil fuels or we're going to get rid of this particular standard to ease our greenhouse emissions, that we let people know and we give people time to give us their feedback. We really are here to serve the people of Independence and we need to give them the window of opportunity to reflect on these changes that we're making. And if we can just add these two statements to this climate change resolution, I think it would bring a world of good governance and transparency to our council. And it would really set Independence aside from all those other communities that have given the same resolution, but haven't given the people of their communities the opportunity to speak on it, to learn if we're actually following the science and to learn the cost associated with these changes, not only for our environment, but to the city as well.
I'll defer to Stephen first.
Sure. I just thought it might be interesting to know that we spent the first, what was it, maybe six months investigating the possibility of doing a greenhouse gas inventory of our communities. And we talked to several other cities that have done it and we've looked at their inventories. And I was actually at the, missed the meeting where this, we finally decided this, but we were essentially told that the solutions and the sources are all very well-known in pretty much every community. And the inventories looked pretty identical in most communities. So you could spend a lot of money hiring consultants to get yourself a greenhouse gas inventory and wind up right back where you started with known solutions to known problems. So while we were very interested in trying to quantify that in the beginning, we were ultimately convinced from looking around that we weren't going to gain much by it.
I just, I just want to
Counselor Cor, go ahead.
First of all, Counselor, if you can provide those amendments to Karen so she can send them out. So we have them on a written form. Secondly, I don't want anybody to have the perception that this resolution is based on anyone's personal opinion. This resolution is based on several other resolutions that have passed throughout the state that are based indeed on science. We spent an inordinate amount of time talking to people in other cities who are doing the same kind of work, some of which are augmented on the city staffs of doing the work. These are people who are climate scientists. These are people who are engineers. These are people who could do this kind of work in private industry as well. This is not a political agenda by any stretch of the imagination. This is an attempt to make sure our community is doing the best thing possible, you know, and bearing the crisis as well as we can. And the last thing, the second part of your amendment troubles me a little bit, but I'll wait until I see it in written format before I, you know, push back on it. But to give people the opportunity to comment on some of these changes, which are going to be state-driven, not city-driven, we certainly don't want to get into that kind of situation. That's not our purview. This is going to be a committee pending whatever the city decides, of course, but this is going to be a committee or commission, much like the Planning Commission, much like the Historic Preservation Commission, that works on issues and brings them to council with the work done so that council can then review and make decisions. This body is not going to make decisions about what Independence or Monmouth does.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Could I chip in? Just, I'm sorry, just to pick up on what Counselor Cor said about the science. I was a research scientist at the Environmental Protection Agency and for many years, what I did was research on global climate change. So I am one of those climate scientists and I'll tell you that the issue is not in question any longer. It's settled science.
Well, I hope you didn't misinterpret me. I'm not arguing the fact that climate change isn't real. What I'm arguing is is if, if the task force comes back and says, okay, just for example, every building now needs to use two-by-sixes in their outer walls to increase the energy efficiency of their buildings, I need to know following the science, how is that really going to reduce our carbon footprint? How is this, because it's really going to increase the cost for people who are building and developing and doing all these things. And this is just an example. It needs to show that one thing is really going to affect the others. And so that's what I'm saying with these resolutions. I'm not doubting and I'm not arguing climate change. I'm arguing that we need to be transparent. We need to follow the science. And following the science means that if we do this, it's going to affect that. And if we can't, if this resolution doesn't have that in there, then it goes back to what Counselor Cor said isn't this, when she said this isn't politics. So this isn't. We can avoid it being politics and looking like politics if we really follow the science. And we can follow the science and we can say that if you do this, it's going to produce this outcome. And if we have that so that it's transparent for people in our city to see, then nobody can say that, you know, this doesn't make that. And that's
I understand your point. And when we, when, once, once the city gets down to those, down into the weeds to those specific actions like you made, or like you gave an example of, there is literature, scientific literature that we could bring to the table that will show the benefit in terms of carbon emissions.
Perfect.
Okay.
I just want it to be written in there always.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're going, we're going to make sure that some other people get in. Kathy Martin-Willis, please.
I think one thing before, because it's feeling a little like we're starting to get into weeds on specifics, that the resolution itself isn't locking us into specific actions that it is recommending that we form this joint committee or commission who would then bring recommendations just like planning council or, you know, traffic, any of those, they bring recommendations to council. They don't bring decided issues. And so then we would continue to do our job of weighing the benefits, you know, on either side before making a final decision. So Counselor Roden, if that helps at all for, you know, a little clarification, I don't, I don't see this as a binding document. And I tried, I will, I'm going to, I'd like to wait to see the written versions of the amendments. I don't auditorily process always really well. I want stuff in writing so I can see it. But yes, would be, would be curious to see those. Because I do agree that, I mean, we, we have to consider equity and how these things impact those at a variety of economic levels in our community. The simpler approach might simply to be as we make decisions like we always do regarding our fleets and replacement vehicles that we, that we do, that we start looking at alternative fuel sources. Chariots has converted with their new purchases to natural gas vehicles. We could look at incentives for solar panels on, on new construction. So I think there are a variety of approaches and I'm, I'm interested in continuing this conversation and bringing the Monmouth Council to the table and incorporating them in that conversation.
It sounds like we just need to circle back to this.
So Counselor, take us.
Yeah, so I actually have problems with a lot of this resolution in the way it's worded and some of the assumptions that are put in here. But, and so, so for me to be in favor of this, I'd have to see this rewritten quite differently. I'm not opposed to having a some sort of commission that's going to look at these issues between Monmouth and Independence. I think that would be fine. But I would want to see this rewritten quite a bit. But I would like to point out that I think in the next two years with the, with the political climate that we have right now, I think we're going to be getting a lot of mandates from the state and federal government that we're going to, we're going to be required to enact. And I think we want to be very careful that, that we're not being redundant and possibly counterproductive in what we're doing. So I think we have to tread kind of carefully how we look at this. Find if we want to have some people come up with some ideas for us, I would like to see this commission put together with some representatives of, you know, possibly representatives from agriculture, certainly from the manufacturing sector, you know, so we get a broad spectrum, not just the environmentalists who want to look at this.
Tom, can we get your concerns in writing if that's at all possible for the task force to look through?
Yeah, I probably could. I could probably do that.
Thank you.
I'll try to put, it may, may take me, you know, a few days, but I could probably get that. Should I send that to you?
I'm sending it to Karen so Karen can get it out to everybody. Thank you so much.
I just had a question.
Go ahead, please.
Stephen, I had a question for you. Sorry, this was a little while ago. But you said that you guys spent like six months and basically all the communities had the same issues. Can you kind of let me know or let us know what the top three? If you could wave your magic wand right now, what would the top three things be in Independence that you want to tackle?
So we have done some brainstorming. I think we've been trying not to get, put the cart before the horse in terms of making sure that we've got city councils who are ready to have a joint committee to bring these suggestions to the table. But of course, Michael and I and others have been thinking about this for a very long time. So and we've been following the literature and state of the art and so forth. So I have been working on compiling a list of things that a committee our size could conceivably do. And I want, I do want to say that things like equity are very much on our mind, being on planning. I am very aware of the cost of housing and other things. And I want to make sure that solutions that we design, typically what you find is solutions have a higher upfront cost and then save you money in the long term. And that's, that's still a big lift for a lot of people. So how do we finance or design financial instruments around that change? But to more directly answer your question, there are a handful of things. Let's see if I can pick three from this list. And I want to say not all of them are about solving climate change. Some of them are about adapting to what's already happened. And a good example of that is, I don't know the way it is in Monmouth and Independence, but in Monmouth, we have warming shelters in the winter for the homeless. But we're also going to need to be talking about cooling centers in the summer and then clean air centers for fire season. We've had at least two really bad fire seasons in the last three years where if you don't live indoors and you are breathing particles, they're going to shorten your lifespan. And, uh, you are breathing particles that are going to shorten your lifespan. Um, and managing, uh, tree cover to help keep the cities cooler is another example of adapting. Uh, on the solutions front, um. And I am sensitive to costs, especially in a small city. But understanding that electrification of buildings is a lot more doable. For heat and for power and for cooking and so forth than it used to be. Um. A lot of cities around the country are starting to look at, and some have past ordinances that. Uh, eliminate fossil fuel use from new construction, particularly houses. I understand, of course, that industry is going to have its own set of constraints. We'd have to learn more about what that means in a city ourselves. Um, but eliminating natural gas connections for new buildings would be a straightforward thing to do. We'd want to talk to the building community about how to roll that out. You know, somebody's already got a project. In the works, we not slam the door on them as soon as the ordinance passed, but. Um, let's see, let's give you one more. Other people have a chance to talk. Um, uh, walkability is something that often gets talked about an awful lot. Um, and sometimes that's about having a complete sidewalk network. Which is something we actually struggle with in parts of Monmouth here, but. Um, it's also about just what you can get to within five or 10 minutes of walking as opposed to. Uh, needing to get into your car to drive to the other side of town or 30 minutes to Carvalis or Salem. So being able to walk down the street for a haircut or to meet a friend for coffee. Or doing a little bit of light grocery shopping. Um, really cuts down on people's. Uh, fossil fuel emissions without even asking them to change what sort of vehicle they drive. So those are a few examples of things that don't cost a lot. They require some policy changes. And, uh, other sorts of things that I think a community our size can handle.
Councillor Morton.
Thank you. I, this is an extremely rich discussion and it's very, very good. I think we may be moving a little too far ahead of ourselves because probably the first thing. To be done would be to form this commission. And make sure that it is in tandem with the city of Monmouth. And as was mentioned, there are going to be a lot of state regulations coming. There are going to be recommendations coming from a number of quarters. And we want to be in a position of not only being proactive, but first being supportive. Of the highest and best use of city monies in accomplishing these goals. So let's, uh, let's continue this discussion, but let's make sure that we have the vehicle in place first. To be able to make some positive action.
Councillor Takeus, I saw your hand. No? Councillor Roden?
I was gonna say, I, I heard this somewhere before. Let's. Let's, we need to pass the bill before we read it. And so I just want to make sure that we're not that type of council. I want to make sure that we know what we're getting ourselves into before we jump into this. And, um, we asked what our top polluters were in Independence and we heard that it's, uh. Getting fossil fuels into people's houses. So. And walking, do we have any top? Uh, producers of. Of carbon gas emissions that you'd like to see encouraged, Mr. Howard?
I think one of the things you'll find in a small community like ours is it don't tend to be point source pollutants. Um, where you've got, you know, the one factory or, um. The one large installation that's causing a lot of emissions. And it can certainly be very hard to get people to do behavior change and I'm actually. Reticent to make this a campaign about personal responsibility. Um, making it easier for people to do the right thing. Um, is. A, a, a tack that I often take. And so it's more about nudges, um, and. It's important to remember that in our daily lives. The point isn't to burn fossil fuels. The point is to eat your home, cook your food, get to work. And so we need to really focus on making sure that people can access those products and services that they need. In a sustainable way. And so we're talking about substitution as much as we are talking about elimination. This isn't about. Taking things away from people. It's about. Finding alternate ways for them to access the same things that they know and enjoy.
Thank you. I would just. I will send the resolutions out to everybody just so I am more clear in it. But when we talk about eliminating fossil fuels into someone's house, and that would be natural gas and those types of things, I think that's a pretty serious issue, so.
So let, let me offer that, uh. I just want to remind everybody, this is a discussion starter. That, uh, we're not taking any action of any kind, other than just having a discussion about where things are. My, uh, opinions on here, I've sat, uh, kind of quiet and, um. This is a pretty global resolution. I tend to like it a little bit more focused on, uh, what we can, uh, what we want to do locally. Uh, I like to be more, uh, more specific as into what kinds of things, uh, we're looking at, uh. Always willing to work in concert with our, uh, sister, uh, city, but I'm not, uh. We can go either way. Uh. I would love to hear additional specific suggestions, uh. That are both, uh, effective and cost effective, uh, that, that make, that make good sense. Uh, because I think that, uh, there is opportunity. Uh, I also want to make sure that, uh. We just went through a goal setting, uh, priority setting and, uh. We're, we're not overly deep in staff, so let, I just want to make sure that we, uh. Uh, talk about that and this, uh, wasn't one of the top, uh, priorities that we, that we identified as a group. And so that's not saying that's not important, but I just want to make sure that we, uh, keep something there. But I, for myself, um, I kind of like it a little bit. I, I don't have to call on the other governments of the world. I just want to focus on what we're doing here and, uh, I think that there's an opportunity. Uh, to, a lot of the things that were just mentioned, uh, were some of the things that are already, uh. We're already evolving in that, uh, we're already a tree city. We're already looking at, uh. It's our 2040 plan, looking at increasing walkability in, in a number of different ways, so, um. However it comes about, I would love to hear, uh. Specific kinds of things that we can look at, uh, that make sense. I don't need a giant globalization. I'd like, uh. More focused on where we are, uh, locally here in town of, of what, you know, what things we could do, what things make sense. Those are the kind of things I think. Councillor Takeus, were you trying to, uh, oh, Mr. Pet? Councillor Takeus, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, I, so, um, yeah, I, I appreciate, uh, what you were saying. So I would maybe suggest that we. I mean, it sounds, it sounds like we've got some amendments. We want to tweak this resolution a little bit or a lot. Um, so maybe we should send in our ideas. I'm going to be doing that. Um, and come back at a later date. To work on the resolution of what we're actually going to resolve and do. Not, not talking about what, what the specific little details are going to be, but what the resolution is going to be.
Mr. Pesamira, you were going to, you wanted to, uh, get in here.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor. Um, and I think, uh, maybe councillor Takeus is, is kind of. And what you said earlier is kind of what I just wanted to say, because you know, uh. I'm certainly not going to get into policy here. Um, that's your guys' job and I certainly won't, uh, step on your toes, but it is. You know, uh, my job and my staff's job to implement any policy that you guys put in place. And so, you know, having, uh, crisp, clear language. Um, is really important to me so that there isn't, uh, disagreement. Um, in the future as to what was meant by a particular language. So I think, you know, making sure that we really say what we mean is important and it's certainly helpful for me. Um, I also will have to, you know, say, as just looking through the resolution, the way that it's written. Um, that there is, uh, staff time and there are costs that will be incurred by the city. Um, potentially from the way, uh, this is put together. Although I will say that I, it's clear to me that you guys gave that, uh, thought and attention when you were putting it together. Um, but I, I, I would hope that we get closer to actually adopting something that. We could have some time as a staff level to go back and, and kind of give you some ideas of. What that staff, uh, would be, uh, in the future, at least estimated, and what the cost would be. Um, and I guess the one that I would, would point out, you know, that, that I would have questions on the most in, in what we have before is, is. Um, in the item where it says, uh, it's going to be further resolved. Um, and the city of Independence, Independence commits to take steps to one. Reduce reliance on fossil fuels in municipal operations. That's something that we can easily get our hands wrapped around and, and figure out what that means. Um, but then it also goes on to say, and to pursue local policies, example, adopt municipal slash building codes. And reforms that promote environmental stewardship and sustainability. You know, that would be one that would be really helpful to have more definition of what that would be, because if that turns into somebody's mind is. Oh, we're going to adopt building codes to disconnect, um, you know, gas from people's homes. Uh, we're not allowed that in the future. Um, you know, I guess I would want to know if that was the type of policy that we're trying to talk about there. Or if this is just more kind of a generic type of, of statement, so. Um, the more specificity we can get, the more helpful it'll be for me to implement it. And again, I'm not trying to get on policy here. I'm just trying to say, okay, well, let's make sure that whatever we adopt, um, is, you know. Is, is understandable and we don't end up having discussions about it that aren't productive, uh, down the road.
Councillor Morton.
I, yes, thank you. I don't think we're talking about arguments with the. The overarching themes here about needing, uh. To address climate change and to do what we can to, to mitigate, uh, difficulties that arise. But I think what we're talking about is needing it to be scalable. To use in our population and to scale down or really investigate. What kind of actions can be taken instead of making too broad of statement that would commit us to something more than we're able to accomplish. With our budget and our, our human capital. So, um, if we can look at that in terms of scalability, I would really like to see some of the research that's been done by Mr. Howard and Mr. Cairns. Sounds like there are at least some bullet points, uh, that we can look at and say, what kind of actions can we take? And not make too broad of a sweeping statement to begin with, but really look at it being scalable for our communities.
So let me suggest something here. Uh, obviously, we're not going to make any decisions tonight. I think we've had a pretty robust conversation to put some issues on the table. I think there's some things that folks are going to be thinking about. I think there's some information that, uh, uh, might be, be provided. Uh, what I'd like to suggest is this is not going to be the first conversation we're going to have about this. And I'm going to suggest that, uh, we take the time, we noodleize. I just, I think I just created a new word, noodleize. Uh, take a look at some of this, uh, think about it, and then we may have another work session on this. To, to see where we're going, to make sure that we're kind of, it, see if we're going the same general ways, uh. And we can, uh, I don't want to get tied up into words. Let's, you know, nail down. Concepts first and then we can, uh, get the right wording. Does that seem like a reasonable way to, uh. Appropriately, step by step move forward without, uh, you know, we're. We're not trying to hit a home run here. We're just trying to go step by step and move forward. Councillor Roden, please.
So I, I appreciate what councillor Morton and councillor Tactics has said about this. And so is this something I want to circle back then to with the, uh. The resolutions I want to add, or is this just something that I don't need to send out anymore and we'll just talk about it in a future work session?
I think it's better for making an eventual decision and we've all made some points here tonight. I'd like to see them in writing.
Yeah, and recognizing that this is all discussion, that, uh. These aren't votes, these are just discussion. And I'm saying this so that anybody listening doesn't. Don't be, nobody be jumping up and down. This is a discussion. This is what, uh, uh. Needs to happen in lots of places in life is you start a discussion and you see where it goes from there, so. And, uh, there's no freight train going through here. It's, uh, yeah. So unless I hear objection. You can send your stuff and if you have ideas or things you want to, uh, uh, share, Karen will collect those and, uh, get those out to folks for. For noodleization and we'll schedule another meeting when it's the appropriate time and we'll go forward. Sound okay with everybody?
Yeah, can I, can I ask Mr. Howard a, a quick question? Now. You have an upcoming presentation to the Monmouth Council?
That's right, next Tuesday. They're having a work session. And it's not clear to me how much they're going to spend focusing on the resolution itself. They have asked us to talk about. Some of the ideas of what could be done. Um, but I will probably have further details when the council packet comes out.
Um, and, and I guess my thought is, if, if the target is to have this, this joint committee and actually have. All of this be community wide rather than city specific. That, um, I would like to hear. You know, perhaps, uh, Mr. Mayor, as you're scheduling that, we could schedule folks in from Monmouth as well. In that work session, because I, I'd like to hear their feedback as well. Um, because I, I think there's more strength in a, in a joint resolution. Than the, and, and if we cannot come to consensus. Then look at the, the possibility of each city having their climate change task force. And then we, we deal with what we are going to do. They deal with what they are going to do. If we can't come to, uh, community consensus on, on how we'd like to move forward. So that would be my input.
Your suggestion is well taken. Okay. Without objection, I think this was a, I hope people felt this was a good discussion. People had a chance to share their thoughts and ideas and, uh, I'm sure we'll be talking about things more. So.
And I also see Mr. Karen's hand is up over there.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't, oh, excuse me, Michael. I, I wasn't trying to. I do, I do now see your hand. I was looking at the pictures.
It's okay. I'm sorry, my face isn't up there. I couldn't get my camera to work. I, I was just going to say that, um, the resolution. Uh, I see it as, as, as asking the council to do two things. One. Um, recognize that there's a problem. And two, um. State their willingness to, uh, look at, at things that the city does through the lens of. Climate change, just simply that. And, and in that sense, it's intentionally vague. It's intentionally general. The, um, the specific recommendations would come from that, um. Uh, uh, board commission or whatever it turns out to be. And, and another thing I wanted to throw in there, I'm a big fan of a book called Drawdown. If you ever want to learn more about specific things. That we can do as cities or as individuals, get a hold of that. Uh, Stephen's holding it up right, right now. Drawdown, the most comprehensive plan ever proposed. To reverse global warming. And it, it talks about dozens and dozens of things that can be done. And it looks at the costs of those things too. And in almost every case. The financial benefits are greater than the costs, so. If you have time, take a look at that book.
Thank you.
And I, I made a list of about 38 things that the city might consider. Based on that book, if you're interested in seeing a list like that.
Sure, I'm sure we would. Go ahead and send that into Karen.
Okay.
Karen, you're going to get a whole stack of papers. Okay, without objection, I think some people would like to go home and have some dinner. So. It's been good to visit with everybody. Nice to see you. Remember, change your clocks on Sunday. It was a good discussion. Moving forward, thank you for your service. Have a pleasant evening. Good night.